All this, Village of Green Hills, regular council meeting of June 24th, 2014 to order. Mr. Lee?
Counselor, please feel free to join me in a moment of reflection.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call the roll.
Roll call?
Here.
Dries?
Here.
Halter?
Here.
Hermes?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Walther?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend the agenda to remove ordinance 2014-05-LNR. If it's seconded, I'm prepared to offer an explanation of that motion.
Second.
The reason, I looked at a number of ways to approach this. I am prepared to give you guys alternate language for us to discuss at the next working session, work session. And I'm in the same camp. I am for prayer, and it'll be reflected in what I'm going to bring forth. If you, I have copies available that I could pass them around. Obviously, it's not for discussion now, but for the work session. If, you know, meets everybody's approval.
Any questions?
So we're discussing the next work session.
Correct. Does it need, do you do that?
Mr. Forbes, I think I will need to have a discussion of my version of it, or maybe both at the same time. This is totally unexpected, and to cancel my-
What was it of yours? I thought it was Jack Lee's. It said Lee here.
This is what I wrote. And we agree at the meeting of the laws and tools that we agree to disagree, so he was not presenting mine at the time Mr. Forbes says to write my version of what I wanted to see in it and to give it to him, and that's what I did. And I feel that just canceling right like that with that comment or including in there, it doesn't seem like it's fair to me.
Well, no, I understand that. But one, I was going to go down the route of amending it, but there was a number of things that would make it very, very complicated when I was looking at our options. And it seemed like the least convoluted way to go about it would be to put out my version of it for the next meeting. We'll discuss it at the working review, and then we can proceed from there. If it made sense to amend it, I would have gone that route.
Okay. It still makes me feel a little bit confused because we had had a meeting. I was directed to do something. I did what I was supposed to do, and now something else is happening in place of that. I don't think that's fair because I was not prepared for that.
Right. And I'd like to remind you, though, when you contacted me about this, you did not send it to council. So if Yvonne did not pass this out, we wouldn't have saw it at all until right tonight.
The instructions that I had from Mr. Forbes were that it will be distributed in the packet, and it will be given to council on, correct me if I'm wrong, because we were not supposed to discuss it or to have an input on what I was writing. You told me that all the discussions and all the changes have to be in an open meeting.
Which is true. What I said was it could be distributed to council, but that I cautioned you that there should not be a discussion among council through email prior to the meeting. Because if there was going to be any discussion of it, the proper place for that discussion would be at a meeting.
Would that be at a work session then? As opposed to-
Well, right now, you've got a, there's a motion and a second-
Yeah.
-to remove it from the agenda.
And we did get to continue a discussion for a short period of time on the motion. Correct?
On the motion to remove it from the agenda, that's what is proper to be discussed right now. If it's removed from the agenda at your work session, this topic can come up, and you can discuss it however you see fit. Your version, your version, any other version.
Yeah, I mean, I always think that would be-
Well, I'm proposing this version. Is that right, Kathy? Is that how, I mean, I'm proposing this for the work session, similar to how Maria proposed-
You will make your version available at the work session, however, if anyone wants to see it prior to it going out into the packet, you're prepared to provide that to you.
Just a clarification on, I went back and I re-watched the meeting. I listened to the input, and I didn't feel that your version would have successfully navigated through, which would have left us without prayer altogether at that point. So I'm doing this in the spirit of getting it through based on what I heard, but also based on, obviously, what I believe. And it wasn't designed to be an offense to you in any way. So, that's-
And we are talking of amending the session, taking it out, the one that will have the word prayer reinstated, the one that was-
No, we're not, I mean, I can pass this out. I don't think it's for discussion now. This is how I felt was most appropriate.
Do we do that now?
For our discussion?
No, but you can keep this in, if you want it. You can keep this and then read it in preparation for the work session, so you know what I'm proposing.
He can pass it out. It's not germane to this motion. Right. The motion that's on the floor right now is to remove this particular ordinance from the agenda tonight.
Yeah, and then I second it, right? Do we vote on it then?
Okay, I call for a vote. Roll call.
Roll call? What was the actual motion?
To take ordinance, I'm sorry.
2014-05?
Yes, I should have read that. To take 2014-05-LNR off the agenda for this evening.
To table-
Not just remove it from the- It's not tabling, it's removing it from the agenda.
Aye. Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
No.
Five to one, motion carries. All right, moving on. Approval of minutes, minutes of the May 27th, 2014, regular council meeting, the June 10th, 2014, council meeting and work session. Any comments, questions on the minutes?
Move if we adopt as presented.
So moved? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, those opposed, no. Okay. Eyes carry. Okay, this is a time for residents to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped, taped recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to two minutes. Anyone?
Anthony Schuler, Ashby Street, mayor, manager, council members. I had a couple of things that I want to say. First off, with these amendment, I mean, the acceptance of the minutes of the past meetings during the May's regular council meeting, before you went to executive session, the roll call was called, and the council member, Lee, had said, "Here." Here is not a yea or nay, and should not be counted, and should be registered as such. I appreciate it. That was put on the record. Thank you. And then two, during the May's regular council meeting, Councilman Lee was asked to lead with a moment of silence. Leading moments of silence without direction is meaningless. I was kind of curious, if the village recognizes the different denominations of our village for the fact of this, that they serve in various ways in our community. It'd be really good if our mayor and council would do so by allowing them to lead the invocations of our meetings, and by doing so, we show gratitude for all the sacrifices that they have done for our community. By refusing to reinsert the word prayer, you're only sending a clear message that Green Hills doesn't tolerate a diversity of opinions and beliefs, and that you want to silence people and separate what they say from what they believe. And I got, I received a copy of the packet of the ordinance, and I too agree that it is kind of extreme with the wording, with the shout. I do like how during the past meetings, how Ms. Brokaw and Willard, Walther, had stated that May was acceptable, and I think that's, I think that should be inserted to be the main thing. But have, I think, have all three, prayer, moment of silence, and I forgot what the other word was, but to have all three inserted with May prior, before the pledge of allegiance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Before I officially start, I do want to thank you, Mr. Halter, and the members of council for tabling this. I think it just needs more work. So I just want to say thank you, and it was a relief to me. The main reason I'm here is because of that. So with that, my name is Dan Dusa. I live at nine on Bowden Court, right here in Green Hills. When the village council decided in January of this year to replace the word prayer with a moment of silence in the rules of council, I for one was pleased. A moment of silence allows everyone to pray or invoke to themselves if they desire. Obviously, I disagree with Mr. Schuler. It is more inclusive and respective and respectful to people of all beliefs. When we walk through the doors and stand before village council, it is important that we all stand as equals. Citizens of all religions or no religion are compelled to come before local government bodies on civic, secular matters, variances, permits, et cetera. Citizens should not be subjected to a religious test or show, or be expected to demonstrate religious obedience at a government function. I do not want any citizens, including myself, to be given the impression that we are second-class citizens because we don't worship like you. The revised ordinance that Ms. Walther Willard has proposed, I have problems with it. According to how I interpret it, the mayor, only the mayor and certain council members are the ones who can invite a member of clergy from the recognized local churches to give prayers. I ask council, and hopefully this will be here in the work session, to clarify if village residents will be able to invite persons to give prayers or invocations at council meetings, just regular residents, not council. And will there be time given for non-denominational readings? Because, and here's my point, if only village council can choose who gives prayers and the denomination, then I respectfully ask council to explain how that is not endorsing or promoting a specific religion or a specific form of Christianity to all the residents of this village. As was stated in a letter in the June edition of the Green Hills Journal, prayer was rarely, if ever, said before council meetings for two decades. It is one thing for council to reinsert the word prayer into rules of council. It is another thing entirely for council to decide that prayer shall be offered at every council meeting and to dictate who is able to give that invocation. In conclusion, I'm not trying to dictate what faith that any resident of our village or any council member should follow. I request that during Village of Green Hills council meetings and civic functions, that council do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Any other?
My name is Wendell Fisher. Live at 26 Deer Hill Lane, mayor and council. During the first part of this year, Green Hills Council decided that rule number two of the rules of council needed to be changed to avoid a lawsuit. Maybe this was brought about by the town of Greece in New York because they were sued by two people who objected that council started their meetings, their public meetings with a prayer. This suit went to the United States Supreme Court. The court has ruled on this matter, upholding prayer before public meetings. I would like to see that council of Green Hills reinstate the word prayer back into rule number two of the rules of council. When council removed the word of prayer, you also removed another word that does not appear in print in rule number two. That word is G-O-D. A quote from Ronald Reagan, "If we ever forget that we are a nation, one nation, under God, we will be a nation gone under." Thank you.
I think what we've seen tonight is how easy a prerogative, once thought and taken for granted, can be lost, and once it's lost, how difficult it is to regain. The gentleman was true and correct. For nearly two decades, prayer was not said in front of this council, at least to my knowledge. And I've lived in this village for two decades. Therefore, when the motion was brought forward to eliminate it, I don't know if anyone really took, gave it a second thought because it was never used, never said for over two decades. It's gone now. Now look what we got. Trying to get it back, literally, literally, is a federal matter. A matter was decided by the United States Supreme Court in a five-four decision in favor of permitting prayer before a public body before a meeting. And if anyone reads that decision by Justice Kennedy, is no requirement for the prayer to be non-denominational. A Christian prayer can be used, a Jewish prayer can be used, a Muslim prayer may be used, and they even mention the potential for Buddhists to come up and mention some thoughts they have in accordance with their theology or philosophy. That what can be used is fairly broad. There is no requirement that it be totally non-denominational. There's no legal requirement. Just read the decisions. It's a matter of public record. It's no secret. If you want to check, just check the United States Supreme Court website, pull it up, Greece versus Galloway, and it's there. And it's written in English. Now, you may have to read it a few times because they cite other cases they had had in the past, but it's there, and it's fairly clear. So I would respectfully suggest that as we go forward on this, maybe it's correct to delay it, maybe not, but just as an example, it's a lesson for everybody. If you lose something, a prerogative, it's very difficult in many ways to get back. And look what we're going through here now, just to get the word, and somehow, we inserted into the rules of council. It really shouldn't be that way. So just think about that. Maybe we all can get a lesson from this. It's just not something we should take for granted. Thank you.
And do you want to identify yourself?
I did. Ted Willard. David wrote.
Oh, I missed it. Sorry.
I probably told other names, too.
Good evening. My name is Terri Trynen, and I live at 37 DeWitt, and I'm a 33-year resident of Green Hills. Tonight, I'm here to make some comments and also to ask some questions. Last Thursday, I very unhappily discovered a bulldozer cleaning up the site of where the children's waiting pool once stood behind our pool facility. I'm here tonight because I'm not happy about it. That structure is a contributing structure historically to the Green Hills Historic District, as recognized under the National Register of Historic Places. We also are in the process of spending $13,500 of village taxpayers' money on a nomination preparation for the National Historic Landmark status. And the Department of the Interiors has already been in and told the village quite frankly, they would not accept any more demolitions. Yet, here we are. As far as I know, there was no public notice that there were any issues with the waiting pool, that it was on the chopping block. No notice was given to the Recreation Commission for any discussion, considerations, or recommendations. No notice has been given to council, after talking with two council people, they verified this, for discussion, recommendations, or more importantly, an approval. So I'm here to find out why it was destroyed and who made that decision.
I knew about it. I mean, I knew about, we talked about it many times before, about the pool, but it was just incomplete. The reason why we built the new pool in the first place because it has a little end for children to get into. It wasn't even built in 38, it was built in 53, wasn't it? After 53?
Correct.
So I don't know how it could be historical.
What, the children's waiting pool?
Yeah, it's built in 53.
No, I'm sorry. It was built in 1938 along with the pool. There are pictures on the National Library of Congress showing it.
Because when you talk about historical, then everything that was modified there as far as going into the pool was already modified anyway.
I'm not talking about the large pool. I'm talking about-
No, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the entrance. That was one of the things I think would be really historical, but we changed the entrance into that. They don't go into that one area off the street anymore. It was totally redone.
All right. Let's save this discussion for a work session. Do you have any other comments?
Well, I had two questions as to who made the decision and why it was made. No answer?
Discuss it in the work session, or the manager can mention in your report if you want to mention that. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak, reports from village officials.
Thank you, mayor. I have another, a number of items I do want to run through tonight. First, a couple of updates. Our next movie night is this Friday, and we're going to move the location from the market stand to the commons to see if we can attract a greater crowd, although it was a lot of fun. We had a really nice day, and thank you for your help, Colers. Appreciated that, and Jeff, and everybody else who helped. That was wonderful. Chief did, thank you so much. Anyway, we're going to do it all again this Friday night, so hope you can be there, and hopefully, we won't have rain. We also need help for Pioneer Day that's moving along, and you will continue to hear. Here are some things for that on July 5th. I was asked to let council know about our tax bill for rental properties, which had previously been $44,000, is now down to $31,646.91. So we are whittling away at that, and that actually would not have reflected a couple of our more recent ones. That'll be reflected then on the next tax billing. So it'll continue to go down. Here we call, we talked previously about changing the policy for the Home Improvement Repair Grant Program. The county doesn't require any legislation to do that, just a rewrite of our guidelines. So we have done that, and I just wanted to report that to you, where we're going from a maximum of 1,000 up to a maximum of 2,000 for that particular program. Also wanted to comment a little bit on garbage. I think it might have been at the work session, one of our previous meetings, where we talked about the enforcement and how that goes, the kind of letters that are sent, what we're expecting of our residents. And I can tell you that, I think, Mr. Dries, after one of our meetings, I believe you were giving a good public service announcement concerning that item. I drove through on a Friday, and there were 16 violations that we found that day. So they were sent the letters also. We'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, now, couples, big thing. I want to distribute what is likely to be the tax budget that will go online Friday. That's the day that I, target date to have that online for public review. So I wanted you to see, I think I passed out enough there. This is different from the draft number one. This is draft number two, and I dated it, so we would make sure we were literally all working off the same page here. Just a couple of items that I'll highlight. Again, I left the income tax projection at 950,000. I know there was concern that maybe it would go up, should we take the risk of projecting it? I'm still very comfortable saying 950 as opposed to a million. Sorry. Maybe later in the year, but not now.
That's fine.
I also added auditor fees. We do, we will be able to do the abbreviated audit again in 2014, so I did insert $10,000. Next year will be an audit year for us. So again, that normally would be around 30,000 to 32,000, but with the abbreviated form that the state has approved for us, hopefully, it'll be 10,000 or less. And I did add in 50,000 in capital outlay for maybe a cruiser, or whatever needs are going to come our way, to have a little something there. I wanted to note that I have lowered the transfers a little bit. Your first draft probably had somewhere around 472 or 478, I think, in that figure. It's now at 447. And what I have done is lowered our contribution to the pool, which I think we'll definitely be able to do, and I also lowered the transfer to golf, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. That is general fund. The other ones, I don't believe there have been, if there were any changes from your first draft, they're really kind of minuscule, but certainly, if you review them, have any questions, don't hesitate to let me know. But I would ask you to turn to the very last page, called Exhibit 3. And a couple of things I wanted to note for you. Apartment building operations, which is the fourth line down. You will note that our estimated receipts will be significantly lower for next year, but that's because our number of properties should be significantly lower. And at this point, I'm estimating nine properties that would be rented that we could potentially carry over into next year. That's not necessarily that we will, but I need to come up with a projection, so that's what I'm using. I think that's a realistic number. That coupled with some carryover, and certainly, our expenses will be going down as well. So that's explanation for that. The other one that I am very uncertain about, that is the golf course. Once again, I budgeted year estimated receipts. I have only put it 5,000. At this point, this year, we're at $5,800 and some odd change for that. I don't want to estimate too high for that category because if it doesn't happen for us, we have an issue. So I have it at 5,000 with expenses at 5,000. And with all of these, you know, this is our, primarily, our estimated revenues, and at appropriation time, we can tailor our expenses to be sure they fit. We'll have a closer look at what our end-of-the-year carryover will be, and therefore, what we'd have to spend in each category. But I don't want to be overestimating any- have to spend in each category, but I don't want to be overestimating anything, and I don't see anything this year that's causing me to put that any higher.
Did you want to touch on, I'm sorry, the health?
Oh, right, yes. I had mentioned the last time that there are a few big issues that are still pending for our budget, and certainly for the appropriation later in the year. That is healthcare, our large healthcare with Anthem Premium will be, we now have a December first start date as opposed to August first. So, it will probably be late October, early November, before we really have a solid answer or good information on where we're going to be going with that. So, at this point in time, I have any five percent increase for, just for our premiums. Anything over that, you know, I'm not saying I think we're going to have a five percent increase, I'm just saying that's all I believe we could handle for the village's portion of those healthcare premiums. So, we're just going to really have to dig into that as it comes about and make changes to policies as we need to. We had also-
On that healthcare, is that in a more drill-down area in the general expenditures, or is it in multiple ones?
It's in multiple. It'll be, yeah, and make it even more confusing, salaries are strictly that, salaries.
And it's in the other.
It's into the other category on this particular one. You know, the appropriation is a little more detailed.
Right.
So, yeah, it's in those figures.
On the, on Exhibit Three, it's showing Draft One. I think there's been only one draft of Exhibit Three, is that correct?
Yeah, actually, that should have said two. It is today's date, but I just didn't change that little one, sorry.
Okay, just looking for clarification.
Thank you.
Thanks.
In fact, a couple of the pages say one, but the date, I changed the date on all of them.
Okay.
I didn't change the draft.
No, no.
Go by the date.
We've had a lot of discussion, and I, yep.
Okay, let's see. Property insurance is another one that's, we'll have to see how we deal with it. I did account for increases, we don't know what that increase will be, but I did a pretty hefty increase in each category for property insurance. I think those were the big ones that could impact this. So, again, let me know if you have any questions when we get it online, if anybody has any questions, feel free to contact me.
I have a question about the garbage, Ms. Kovak. I had a neighbor that, I just happened to notice that the recyclables were not picked up. And I called the office, and I said, "Right, I see this, I entered the can, because mom can't do that, but this is filled." So, she said, "Well, I'll make a phone call." Well, I didn't know, no one was explaining that to me, but when they came back home, they decided to take it back in, because it was already seven o'clock or eight o'clock, and still was sitting there. Then I was told that, no, that we have to leave it out there for about up to forty-eight hours. Well, they were afraid to get a slip, because it was left outside there on the curb. So, I didn't know how to handle that. Would you direct me?
Our office was called. You contacted our office, I don't know if the resident did, so we're aware of it. And we do typically, when there's those issues, we even tell the police department, so nobody is going to receive a letter.
Okay.
It's like that.
All right. I'll pass the word back.
Let's see. I know I haven't done the public records, I'm going to hold them again, because I think we have a long agenda. So, I will read them at the next meeting. And I also need to comment that our chief has been with us a year now. He brought it to my attention, I can't believe it's already been a year, but I do want to thank him for all that he's done and all that he will continue to do over the future decades. And, I mean, he's just done a great job, and thank you, Chief. I just can't believe it's already been a year, it's been a great year.
Should we bring a kid?
I can. Actually, I did, in reference to Ms. Trynance's comments, I can tell you that the book that I've looked in in the past is this particular book, and actually doesn't even address the waiting pool as having been there. And I guess things that I've seen had indicated that was constructed in nineteen fifty-three, but if, you know, we'll look into it a little closer. As far as discussion, it was talked about probably over a period of about two and a half years on what to do with it. We had first decided to not use it any longer, then the next year, we talked about not paying the license fee for it any longer. You know, that's one of those things that, once you don't pay it, then it's hard to get back, so we carried it for a year, then when we talked about it to not pay it again, because it was silly for me.
Also, even fixing it, we'd almost have to tear up the whole thing to fix it.
And that was the big thing. The cost was going to be, I think it was twenty thousand, just for the piping, it was an issue with piping. It was constantly draining.
And there was cracks in the concrete.
Right. So, we, there was discussion a few times, and then I know that we talked about it in regards to capital improvements at Malloy's, what could enhance it, and I know there were some options there on, you know, do we just fill it in, do we take it out, could we put a gazebo there, something to enhance the property. And it has simply been something that's been on the list, the to-do list for the Service Department, that does an incredible job of addressing as many things as they can. It came up on their list, and they went for it. That's where we were at.
And I guess, and I understand from the perspective of, I think we should have a process, especially when it comes to taking something out, because there's many things I don't even know about, and I don't think it was premeditated, like, oh, we'll do this and not let anybody know. But I do think that there's something to a process of, hey, this is what we're doing. Even if we did talk about it over a longer period of time, I think it's good to bring it up and have a system in place so that we're not losing something that is valuable. In this case, I know there was a lot of issues with it, but I think we have to, we owe that to the community, I think.
And I'll make a comment. Probably twenty-five years ago or so, it was substantially redone, so I don't know how much of the original was left. I think we, I can't remember what all we did, but we tore out a good bit of it and reformed it.
Sure. Well, and I think the other thing, too, that was brought up, and I think it's a legitimate request, it may make sense, it might be the best thing for us to do, to remove something, but at least having that small window of opportunity, if we want to document it, or take some more photos, or do that kind of thing, we need to have that in place so that that opportunity's there and not gone, so.
Go ahead.
Well, you know, along that same line, but I don't believe there's any historic value. If you can picture the, as you look at the back of Malloy's, the right-hand side, there are sliding doors and a deck that was built on there, it's wooden, it's a disaster, and we need to remove it, we're going to remove it, and probably replace it with some steps down to the, already, we have a paved area there or so. In the future, perhaps, we would have funding to enhance that and take a walkway directly to it, rather than replace the wooden deck that's there right now, so.
Any other questions? Moving on, Law Director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, no report tonight.
Thank you. Clerk of Council Catherine Lys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The June two thousand fourteen Community Calendar, Resolution Number Two Thousand Fourteen Ten F, and Notice of the Cancellation of the Recreation Commission of June seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, all were posted as planned. And if there are no questions, that would conclude my report.
Okay, thank you. Chief of Police Neil Forlomen.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We're taking a look at the mayor's court tracking software that's in our records database, and possibly integrating that with the current court software we have. We think it would be a cost savings, and eliminate some redundant data that officers are currently doing, that would be assumed by our clerk. We're also monitoring a number of hot spots in the community to take a look at some thefts that occurs, traffic violations, and juvenile problems. We've used officers on foot, we've used them on bicycle and on stationary patrol. We are continuing to collaborate with Forest Park Police in conjunction with the Ohio Attorney General's Mobile Academy. In August, they will be back, and our officers, along with Forest Park officers, will be receiving defensive tactic training from the state's trainers, and that's at no local cost to us. I did include a picture in our report, and for those that might be watching, it is on our website as well. But it serves two purposes. You can, at the top of that picture, see the part, or at least most of the new sign, that Councilmember Halter installed for us recently. I think it turned out very well, and that's what visitors to our department see when they come to our window now. And then the last item, other than the statistical data, is that recently, we were visited by members of the McKelvey Road Baptist Church, and the ladies of that church handcrafted some very beautiful blankets and puppets, and put in some beanie babies, and we will be using those for children who are in distress, and that often occurs at scenes of traffic accidents, sometimes domestic violence calls, and other traumatic incidents, and those are of great comfort to those kids. And we're very happy and grateful to the ladies of the church to have those, they made them and presented it to us. In terms of the statistical analysis during the month of May, we investigated four accidents, it was the same as May last year, seven crimes, one hundred and sixty-two other incidents. We made seven hundred and seventy-four contacts, that's up a bit from four hundred and ninety-three last year. Hundred and seventy-seven of those were dispatched, and five hundred and ninety-seven were self-initiated by our officers, as compared to three hundred and eighty-five, ninety-five last year. We provided assistance to the public, one hundred and fifty instances, other agencies forty-nine times, made forty-three criminal arrests and eighty-eight traffic arrests during the month of May. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions, is the chief? Hearing none, does anybody have anything to report for the fire chief?
He mentioned that, he brought to our attention, he wasn't at the traffic safety meeting, but that the brush truck will be delivered either this week or next week. So, after our last report, when we said we had no clue when it was coming in, we do now have, at least in the next two weeks, we should be receiving it. And also, he mentioned that the emergency lights at Wynton are broken again, and probably due to banner wait in wind. So, we need to look into that, not only getting them fixed, but maybe figuring out a wait restriction for banners.
In my report, the audited court receipts, since I forgot them the last regular council meeting, I have two of them. One for the April report, and the State of Ohio received two thousand, eighty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Treasurer of Hamilton County received seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, and eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars was to the Village of Green Hills, for a total of ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The month of May, twenty-five hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents went to the State of Ohio, ninety-one fifty went to Hamilton County, and ninety-five hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-five cents to the Village of Green Hills, for a total of twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. So, the police are out there working.
I thought something else, I thought something else when you're talking.
Oh, go ahead, that's it. We'll jump back to the manager.
I forgot something really, really important, too. I think most of you met Matt Sanders, he was here a little bit earlier, I can't believe I forgot this. He was our new finance director, replacing Kim Cox, who left us a couple of weeks ago. And Matt has been working for a private CPA firm as an auditor, so he has been auditing governments, and now, I guess he was just anxious to give his hands on the other side. Anyway, we're pretty excited about it, he seems to be very knowledgeable about everything he's going to be dealing with, and he starts on Tuesday, so the appropriate time, if I could have a motion to concur with my appointment, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay. I was going to ask you about that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, moving on, committee reports, Recreation, Cable TV, Mr. Hermes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to follow suit with Mr. Forbes and say there is no report at this time.
Okay. And any questions or comments? Okay, moving on, intergovernmental affairs, laws and rules, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The intergovernmental rules and laws committee met on Friday, June thirteenth, yeah, Friday the thirteenth. And just for the calendar, our next scheduled meeting is Monday, July twenty-eighth, at ten a.m. Some of the things we discussed, first were up was the American Legion parking easement. The gentlemen that were purchasing the American Legion property provided some options, we'll get into a discussion on that later. There was also a discussion and presentation from Lisa Caldwell, who's the code official for NIC, that does our code violation enforcement. And it was a very interesting discussion, in that she kind of gave a breakdown of, by percentage, the process, and how things are handled from property issues. She said that most, about seventy-five percent of the issues are handled by the friendly letter that goes out to deal with certain situations. About ten percent get the second, the second letter, five percent get the third letter, which is sent out by certified mail, and the final five percent are handled creatively, so to speak. Many of those situations are vacant properties or other difficult issues. She did bring up the fact that she felt that we could improve upon our grass-cutting enforcement code, and I think the village manager was willing to take a look at that and offer some suggestions, but basically had to do with shortening the time relative to delivery of the notice and getting that situation taken care of. Other than other issues that were discussed earlier, new business, councilmen and author brought up, looking at the possibility of inordinants, dealing with parent responsibility and curfew. That seems to be it at this point. Again, our next meeting is July twenty-eighth at ten a.m.
Questions or comments?
I just wanted to add, if Mr. Forbes could give a very short presentation. He talked about administrative warrants, in case of that sometimes things do not work out for the different steps, how to enforce certain violations for repairs and things like that, and you gave a very short version of another option, and the caveats of it as well, of administrative warrants.
We, well, your code official that was at that committee meeting addressed that. And I think the gist of it is that your code official generally only has the authority to observe what she can observe from the street or from outside premises. They don't have authority to enter inside of structures. But there is a process where they can, and it's a normal process to go down to the court, and you have to be able to articulate probable cause that there's a violation on the inside of the building, and that there is a method that code enforcement officers can use to obtain what's called an administrative search warrant, to go inside of a building to determine if there are additional violations. But that's, you know, that's, not extreme is too strong of a word, but that's an extra step, just like a police officer needs a warrant before they can go in your house to search for something. So, it's akin to that, but the process does exist.
Thank you.
Service and Streets Committee, Ms. Walter.
We're still figuring out the painting situation on the side of the maintenance building. There's other couple of things that we're going to touch on, the meeting which is on six thirty, June thirty, at nine o'clock. I had received some emails having to do with who is in charge of what, and questioning that, so I thought that would be a good time to bring it forth. On six twelve, I went to the softball game where the Baba Dogs won the game, and they have been consistently winning that every single time, and Mike Castor has some great moments there, and he's our foreman. So, it's a great time to, a place to pass the time there, and to meet your neighbors and that, and I, so far, every single game has been a winner, it's been really fun. I attended also very briefly, I took some plans at the exchange of plans that we had on six fourteen, and I was able to get from there also some really nice plans that I'm going to relocate on all the corners that we have from Damon, and starting on Wynton Road all the way down. We lost some from this winter. So, I have already put some there in the different places, and I need to finish that up. up. I'm just kind of babying it a little bit because of the extreme heat. Community Day at the pool, it seemed like everybody was having a great time. It was fun. It was a great, altogether, the food, the atmosphere, the music and everything. So, Mr. Halter, great job. For the hot dogs in charge person, that was also great. I wanted also to, please would you pass a message to your wife? I gave several bags of Crayolas to the library for the summer. She used to always go there and have some art classes there for the library, and I just gave it on her name, for the Recreation Department and your wife's name.
Okay, cool.
On six-sixteen, I took part, I'm a member of the student achievement committee, and we had a meeting there. Mr. Smith, the superintendent, Dr. Viola Johnson, had the committee. They were very receptive for all these suggestions, and we had about ten members in there at one time. Some of them are overlapping at every time, but some of them are not. I also read in the newspaper, on the Hilltop Journal, they had a meeting, it was called the Board of Education Meeting with the Forest Park Council. I went there, and to the amazement of my husband, I did not open my mouth, not even once. I mean, I knew that was amongst the Forest Park Council people and the Board of Education. There were two members there, and I did find several things in there. One that they had received from the auditors, a millage that they're thinking about their construction for the buildings of eight-point-four-eight for thirty-seven years. And they also had a very open and frank discussion of give and takes about tips, the tax incentives for businesses and things like that, and how they wanted that the business would take part of the community and the school system, either with grants or actually physically working with the school system, and how the board president, pretty much more than the fact, what can we do as a school system and a board of education to enhance or better the community of Forest Park? And that was very refreshing. It was really nice. And that occurs every third Thursday of the month at seven o'clock. And I read it on the Hilltop Journal. I also, in preparation for the, for the meeting, I, of Streets and Services, I go to every street that there is around and drive around and all that. And I just wanted to bring to the attention of Mr. Mayor that we all also not only give awards for the displays at Christmas time, but we also give it for the summer. I don't know if you have entertained that thought yet, if you need help, but I looked at the A section and the H section. It has some incredible gardens, and the flowers are just full bloom. So before we get to temperatures of ninety-six degrees, if you need any assistance, I'd be glad to go around with you. That's what we did with the, with the Christmas thing. This last time was Mr. Dries, the conductor there of the whole thing. Six-twenty-three, there was the Board of Education meeting. I attended that. I made some comments as a just taxpayer about the forty-seven percent of the OGT's failure, also about the third grade guarantee. It's about one-fourth of the third graders that did not meet the minimum standards. And I gave some, several suggestions about that, and Mr. Smith asked me to meet with him for some further discussion. And I will be meeting him tomorrow at nine o'clock in the morning. And like I said, the Streets and Services is on Monday at nine o'clock. I also want to mention that anybody that is reviewing your license plates, make sure that you mention the village of Green Hills. Otherwise, if there is a mistake of some sort, we do not get the monies for that. And I want to wish every single one of the residents of Green Hills, taxpayers, voters, a very happy and safe Fourth of July. And just remember the last thought, that freedom is not free. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Comments or questions? All right. Community Development, Mr. Halter.
Yes, as Yvonne mentioned, we have movie night this coming Friday. It's gonna be on the common. It's a really great thing. We had a lot of fun, had a lot of help. Thank you for your help, Doug and Diana. And we had everything from premeditated approach to being there, and passerby's that just said, hey, this is kind of cool, we want to check it out. So that'll be on Friday night. What is the movie?
The Rookie.
The Rookie, so.
G-rated. Apparently there's two.
G-rated? Oh, really? There's two different versions? We will only be doing the G-rated versions of movies, as far as I know. Second thing is, all those that helped at Community Day in the pool, I just, Doug Kohler, Fred and Amy Merle really stepped up to the plate, and Greg and Peggy Hermes, my wife Betsy, Maria's donation was, you know, really helpful for giving people hot dogs and ketchup and mustard. Also want to thank Swim Safe. We, you know, contract Swim Safe. The lifeguards are very polite. I had them pulling vinyl off signs because we were converting our seventy-fifth anniversary signs to regular signs so we could keep using those. And the attitude of the lifeguards as we messed with their schedule and took their breaks away by having kids do activities during the breaks, they were fantastic. They really were, and still doing their job of making sure things are safe. So it was a wonderful thing, and I think the hope and plan is to do another one, probably August, I would say, if we can, if we can fit it in. But it was a good event. Another thing I'd like to do now and then is if you have a community development event, I have no problem featuring one or two events. Obviously, I cannot, you know, speak for all the things that are going on in the community. But if it's something geared for the community, as this one is, the Coffee House at Green Hills Community Church, the Presbyterian Church on Wynton and Cromwell Roads, will open its doors for the second time Friday evening, July twenty-fifth, at seven-thirty. So July twenty-fifth at seven-thirty, the featured music group will be the Green Hill Strings, a bunch of Green Hills residents. They are six guys with guitars, mandolin, piano. So if you're looking for something to do on July twenty-fifth, that would be worth checking out. And don't hesitate to contact me to see if there's something else worthy of mentioning to the community. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Halter, I'd like to comment and commend whoever's been altering the concert on the green, on the common signs. It's been very informative, what it is, the little added signs on top, and crossing out Wednesday and making it Monday. That's, that's a good job on that.
Well, it was kind of interesting because Jim Miller, who does a fantastic job, I know it's said often, but really, the effort that Jim puts in, he had asked me for some of, I have made those topper signs, which is basically a stand you cut down. Well, I have a long side and a short side, and I started to drive around, and I saw the car show, and there, he had the long, and it wasn't him, it was somebody that did it for him. The long side was up, and there's these two spikes. I'm like, oh, no. So we got that turned around, but they just do a fantastic job.
It did the job that caught your eyes.
But kudos to Jim and his crew, and just keep supporting the concert. It'll be a good thing.
If he could only do something with the weather.
He's that reflexive one.
Well, Monday night, we got halfway through last night. Skies opened up. Man, that was a great band last night. Jim found another tremendous band.
We had the same problem on Wednesday with the storm after the intermission.
Yeah, the car show was, was, there was a big turnout for that, and then they all didn't, all started hustling off at halftime.
It was a convertible special.
Because they did want to get their cars dirty or wet. Okay, moving on. Traffic and Safety, Ms. Brokaw.
The Traffic and Safety Committee meeting met today. We discussed the noise ordinance, speaking of weather, that we'll have our second reading today. I just thought I'd mention that it came about because we used to have a noise ordinance, and somehow it disappeared. I don't know if it, when we switched books or switched companies, it just wasn't in there anymore. So the council never actually got rid of the noise ordinance. It just vanished. So it was brought to our attention, and this is where it came from. So it's basically the same ordinance that was in there before. It was updated a little bit. We didn't mention phonographs in it anymore. We didn't mention some of, we just said devices to incorporate any kind of future media developments or any kind of future, I mean, we didn't picture phones being this size when the original ordinance was originally written. But basically, it's Monday through Friday after ten p.m. and before seven a.m., and then Saturday, Sunday and legal holidays. It's again after ten p.m. and before nine a.m. is when devices shouldn't be so loud. And then it's, and then, or construction noises to that nature. So it's just putting something back in that was never meant to be gotten rid of. So we'll have the second reading today. We also mentioned the Kalia again, since that's going to be coming up in July, the final verdict. So Chief Fertlemen and the accreditation manager will be attending the hearing on that. We also are looking on updating our police ordinance. We, the committee, got a copy of what both the chief and Yvonne, manager Kovak, looked at, and we are reviewing it, and we'll discuss it again at our July meeting, in hopes to have it on the agenda for the August meeting in front of council. We also have a new part-time officer in charge and investigator position, job description that we're going to be reviewing for our July Traffic and Safety meeting, and then hope to have it on in front of council in August as well. We've discussed cruisers. Right now, we have some old ones, and we're looking at purchasing one new one this year. And then, one of the first things our finance director has to do is figure out how, and then getting new ones, a new one next year as well. Some of ours, I believe they were purchased in two thousand and seven and have over a hundred thousand miles. And I know that for those of us who drive regular cars, that is pushing it, but when it's police cars, that's how many road miles they've traveled. That doesn't calculate how long they've been running, because a lot of time it's idle time, and then also the terrain that they traverse is much different, hopefully, than the terrain the rest of us traverse. We are doing regular driving, they're doing more stop and go, so it actually has more wear and tear on the vehicle than hopefully the rest of our drivings. I hope people are driving a little bit more smoother and consistently than police officers have to travel. We also, council is looking at getting our little ID cards, and they are updating the software, so we still haven't gotten those done, and he will email us when those are available. As I mentioned, during the fire chief's report time, the brush truck will be delivered soon, within the next two weeks. And we just went over the monthly report from the police department and discussed the emergency lights. Our next meeting will be July twenty-second at five-thirty p.m. We will be consistently meeting the fourth Tuesday of the month at five-thirty p.m., unless otherwise notice, notice is given, and it's, we meet across the way in the chambers. So if anyone has any questions, that's all I have.
On the noise ordinance, that includes fireworks and things like that. On the holidays, sometimes we, there's a problem when we get to Fourth of July and things like that, is at midnight, and that's still going on. So I don't know.
Well, it's not supposed to go on at all.
I know. I understand that, but they are, and so I don't know exactly how to handle that.
I think we can enforce it now with regard to fireworks ordinance, correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
I have to double-check, but I believe so.
Okay.
But for noise, the correct response is to contact the police department and give them a complaint about the noise. If you don't tell them about it, they don't know about it. They can't be everywhere at once.
Moving on. Finance and Audit, Mr. Dries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of the work that Finance and Audit has done in the last thirty days is in front of you, in the form of version two of the budget, or draft two. Again, that'll be posted by Friday, and our budget hearing will be July eighth. At the proper time, I have a resolution, and I also, at the proper time, I have a concurring motion regarding the hiring of the new finance director. I usually try to stick to finance, but I've got two other items, and so I've got the floor. Unless someone grabs a microphone, I'm gonna keep going. The only thing better than Joel Suggs' tan right now is the condition of the golf course itself. And so I told him that he could come and speak for the golf course tonight, or he could leave it to me, and that might be at his own peril. But the golf course is in great shape. I actually played early Sunday morning before anyone in my house woke up, and Joel was there cutting the first screen at seven o'clock, and I was on the third hole. And it's in, just in fantastic shape. If you're a golfer and you can't find the time or the money to play regularly, you need to get up there. It's a great place to practice. I think my game's getting better because I'm spending some time there. So I would just encourage you to find a friend. It's a great way to spend a little bit of time. Leave yourself alone in the car, get unplugged and have an enjoyable time. So make use of a great community asset. The other thing I want to talk about, and this is probably at my own peril, too, is the whole prayer thing, and I just want to make a couple of brief comments. Thanks, everyone, for weighing in on it. None of us will all agree on exactly how this thing finishes, but I want to share just a couple of thoughts. Number one, we're your neighbors. We're, I looked up here, none of us are pastors by profession or clergy by profession. And various people have various thoughts about how public they want to share what their faith is. And so I would hope that people would take that into consideration. I'm grateful for everyone that prays for public officials, whether it be us sitting up here or state officials, or God knows that the federal government needs prayer with all the things going on around the world. So I would share that thought. I was the one that was concerned about the language that was in the rules of council originally. At that time, the federal court had not, this, the case had not been heard or decided by the Supreme Court. This village has unfortunately been subject to what I believe to be frivolous lawsuits that have cost us a lot of money, cost staff time. And, and the money isn't just for attorneys. There's a lot of other indirect costs that people, once they think about it, they go, oh, yeah, like time for the staff to pull things from records, time for people to have discussions with attorneys. Our public officials liability premium has gone through the roof because of what I believe are frivolous lawsuits. So there are, I was looking for a way to make sure that we were not a target, to play a little bit of defense. And whether that was a good decision or a bad decision, everyone's entitled their own opinion. I've read the decision, the Greece decision. I don't think that there's a problem legally to do that. I was also looking to be consistent. You know, elected officials get banged on hard about all you do is pass laws, pass laws, pass laws, and there's more and more invasion to what we can and can't do, and more laws that restrict how we act. And rarely do you see anybody at any level remove an ordinance or a law. And I was looking for us to just be consistent with how, our actions be consistent with what our rules were. And removing the rules of council as they stand at this moment, right now, does not prevent anyone, whether it be a member of the public, to get up and for two minutes pray, or any of us to offer a word of prayer. And so I want to be clear about that, because some of the things that some of us have said has, have, have been distorted. So I think we're gonna get to a good solution, and so I'll just conclude my remarks about prayer with that. That's all I have.
Thanks, Vlad. Questions or comments? All right, moving on to unfinished business. We have an ordinance, number twenty-fourteen dash oh-four T and S.
I move to suspend the rule to read the ordinance in its entirety and to read it by title only.
A second. It's been moved and seconded to read the ordinance by title only, and suspend the emergency?
No, just read it by title only.
Yeah, okay. Because we've already read it once.
We've already read it once.
Okay, okay. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Brokaw?
Well, she's gotta read it by title only, then.
No, we had to vote on that.
For suspension of the rules, it should be a rule.
For suspension of the rules, it should be a roll call vote.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye. I'm...
Motion passes.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2014-04-TNS, adopting chapter five.
You read it. You read it by title.
Yeah, I'm reading the title.
Oh.
Adopting chapter 511 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding no noise control.
Second.
Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded. Now I have to find my ordinance.
I don't think we have.
Yeah, we don't. Adopting ordinance 2414-04-TNS, adopting chapter 511, Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding noise control. Questions or comments? Hearing none? Roll call?
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance carries. Ordinance 2014-04-TNS. Okay. All right, the next order of business, new business, resolution 2014-11CD, resolution authorizing the manager to enter into an agreement of cooperation with Hamilton County, Ohio pursuant to provisions of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. Halter?
I have resolution 2014-11-CD, first reading.
Got a resolve, baby.
Okay, got it. Corporate agreement for participation in Hamilton County Community Development Program, resolution authorizing the manager to enter into an agreement of cooperation with Hamilton County, Ohio, Ohio pursuant to provisions of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, whereas the Congress of the United States has enacted the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, which has, has its primary objective, the development of viable communities, and whereas Hamilton County qualifies under said act as an urban county eligible to receive federal block grant funding for support of community development activities, and whereas said act provides for and encourages units of local government to enter into agreements of cooperation with urban counties for purposes of undertaking essential community development and housing assistance activities, and whereas the Council of Village Green Hills, Ohio desires to enter into a cooperative agreement with Hamilton County for federal fiscal years 2015, 2016, and 2017 of the community development program. Now therefore be it resolved by, I'll stop there. No, that's right. Now it be resolved by the Council of Village Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio, section one, that the manager is hereby authorized to execute the cooperation agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, a copy of which agreement is attached herein to and made part thereof, hereof. Section two, that the resolution shall therefore take effect and be in effect immediately upon passage.
Second. Okay. And it's been moved and seconded to pass resolution 2014-11-CD. We have any questions? Comments? Hearing none? Call for a roll call vote on resolution 2014-11CD, authorizing the manager to enter into an agreement of cooperation with Hamilton County, Ohio pursuant to provisions of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. All those in favor? No? Brokaw?
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Resolution 2014-11-CD. Next item on the agenda is another resolution, number 2014-12-F, regarding information from the county auditor for purposes of evaluating and levying a tax exceeding the 10 mil limitation. Mr. Dries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and for those of you that say, boy, this looks familiar, we had done this before, and the county came back and asked us to add some things to this resolution, even though the resolution that we sent to them was quite similar in nature to previous ones. Is it, anything, anything to add?
That would be correct.
Thank you.
As an exact...
Well, we changed the dates, but the same format. Resolution 2014-12-F, requesting information from the county auditor for purposes of evaluating and levying a tax exceeding the 10 mil limitation, whereas the village council has preliminarily determined that the amount of taxes which may be raised within the 10 mil limitation will be insufficient to fund necessary services provided by the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio, and whereas the primary purpose and intent of such funding is for street repair and maintenance expenses as authorized by 5705.19G of the Ohio Revised Code, and whereas the Ohio Revised Code 5705.03 requires the village to obtain certain information from the county auditor prior to proceeding with the submission of a tax levy to the electors of the village. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio, members thereto concurring. Section one, the village council has preliminarily determined that it is necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the benefit of the residents of Green Hills for street repair and maintenance expenses as authorized by ORC 5705.19G for a period of five years. Section two, the levy to be placed upon the tax list is a renewal levy. Section three, the village council hereby requests information from the county auditor related to the current total tax valuation of the village and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a tax, levy of tax at a rate not exceeding 1.5 mils for each $1 of valuation. Section four, the question of this renewal levy shall be submitted to the electors of said village of Green Hills at the general election to be held at the usual voting places within said village of Green Hills on the 4th day of November 2014. Section five, that said renewal levy shall be placed upon the tax list of the current tax year 2014. Section six, the clerk of the village council is hereby directed to immediately certify to the county auditor this resolution and obtain from the county auditor the information requested hereunder. Section seven, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its adoption.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass resolution number 2014-12-F, requesting information from the county auditor for purposes of evaluating and levying a tax exceeding the 10 mil limitation. Any comments, questions?
Small, little synopsis of what that really meant.
All that is, is we are calling, we are asking the county to tell us how much money will be produced by the renewal levy, and this is our road levy that comes up for renewal every five years. I want to say this is the fifth or sixth time, it's been, it's been a long time, we've had this...
Seventy-nine, maybe it was originally passed, seventy-nine, seventy-six, somewhere in that time, in the late seventies.
Late seventies.
How much does it generate, you think, normally?
Thirty-seven thousand.
I was going to say, yep, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven thousand a year?
Yep, yep, and you know, we've got catch basin work that we've had to do this year, this money, we have a great opportunity for some grant money to repay a portion of Went and Road, and this, we need to come up with match money for this, so this is...
Yeah, from Chalmers all the way down to...
Yeah, which would be great, so it's $37,000 that we need.
Yes, and it's renewal.
And it's a renewal, that's correct, and it's not added, it's not an increase, it's a renewal.
Okay, call for a vote, vote, roll call, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Resolution number 2014-12-F, requesting information from the county auditor for purposes of evaluating and levying a tax exceeding the 10 mil limitation passes.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to concur with the hiring of a new finance director, Matt Sanders, concurring with the municipal manager's recommendation.
Second. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye, those opposed, no?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
And I would like to make a motion to convene to executive session to discuss the possible sale of real estate.
Can we do calendar first?
Nope, calendar, sorry.
Okay, let's do calendar.
Touche.
Seven sixteen at 7:00 o'clock, Recreation Commission meeting.
July 5th, the Bob Carlson 5K run on the commons, I believe 8:00 in the morning.
Yes. July 5th, Pioneer Day, and laws and rules on July 28, 10:00 AM.
July 8th?
Twenty-eighth.
Oh, ju, yes, I was going for the next one. July 8th, July 8th, public hearing on the budget.
July 5th, we'll have the annual parade for Green Hills Pioneer Day, it's at 10:30 AM. The Traffic and Safety Committee will meet at 5:30 PM on July 22nd.
June 30 would be Streets and Services at 9:00 AM.
Anything else?
Anything else, check the website.
The movie this Friday, movie this Friday.
All right, now your turn.
I'd like to make a motion to convene to executive session to discuss the possible sale of real estate, and there will be action after we come out of that meeting, or presumed there will be action after that meeting, so.
Roll call?
Second.
Hey, roll call?
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go into executive session.
Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution, make a motion to accept resolution number 2420, to adopt resolution number 20...
What, what? No. We need to adjourn. Oh, we didn't adjourn.
We did adjourn from executive session.
Yeah.
Do you need to make the motion?
I need a motion to adjourn. I would like to make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Second. Okay, now, do I just say so moved, or do, yes, so moved?
Everybody, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay.
So now you are back in...
Regular session.
We're on television, guys, come on.
I would like...
And you need to move to amend the agenda to add...
I move to amend the agenda to add...
Two resolutions?
Two resolutions.
Do I have to read the number?
2014-13-CD and 2014-14-CD.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, roll call? No?
All in favor? All in favor?
All in favor, say aye, opposed, no.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, I would like to make a motion to...
No.
Move to that, no.
Go ahead. You have to read it.
I was, but don't I say...
You read it, and then you move to adopt it.
Okay. It's awful, it's pathetic, I shouldn't have this. Resolution number 2014-13CD, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract for purchase and sale of real estate located at 3 Andover Street, whereas the municipal manager has been presented with an offer to purchase the property located at 3 Andover Street, and whereas the Council of Village of Green Hills desires, desires to authorize said sale and purchase. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, and...
Its members.
Its members, elected therunto concurring. Section one, that the municipal manager is thereby authorized to enter into a contract for the purchase and sale of property located at 3 Andover Street at Latasha, to Latasha Thompson, substantially in the form of, the contract attached hereto has Exhibit A incorporated herein by reference. Section two, that the municipal manager is further authorized to execute any and all necessary documents to fulfill the sale of said property. Section three, that the finance director is hereby directed to deposit the sale proceeds into the general fund. Section four, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. I move to adopt resolution 2014-15CD.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 24-13-CD, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract for purchase and sale of real estate located at 3 Andover Street. Any discussion or questions?
Just for the members of the general public, you want to just give a little synopsis of the price and...
Yes, the purchase price is $31,400, and we were asking, I believe, $33.90 for that property.
And this is consistent with our goal of increasing homeownership, this is somebody that currently is a tenant in a village-owned property and will now be a resident in their own home?
Yes.
I would also like to comment that I'm going to be abstaining because I own 5 Andover, and it, since it's right adjacent, I figure I have a interest, so I'm going to abstain, but I just want everyone to know why.
Okay, roll call?
Brokaw?
Abstain.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Motion carries, resolution number 24-13-CD, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract for purchase and sale of real estate located at 3 Andover, Andover Street, passes.
I have resolution number 2014-14-CD, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract for purchase and sale of real estate located at 26 Chalmers Lane, whereas the municipal manager has been presented with an offer to purchase the property located at 26 Chalmers Lane, and whereas council for the Village of Green Hills desires to authorize said sale and purchase. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of Village of Green Hills, Ohio, its members elected therunto concurring. Section one, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to enter into a contract for the purchase and sale of property located at 26 Chalmers Lane to Chris...
Tischler.
Tischler, substantially in the form, form of the contract attached hereon to as Exhibit A incorporated herein by reference. Section two, that the municipal manager is further authorized to execute any and all necessary documents to fulfill the sale of said property. Section three, that the finance director is hereby directed to deposit the sale proceeds into the general fund. Section four, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. I move to adopt resolution number 2414, 2014-14CD.
Second.
Any discussion?
Want to see a little bit about this one?
Why not?
Okay, 26 Chalmers has been a property that is gutted, and that proposes to sell for $8,000 to an individual who does have plans and money to renovate it, and this too will be an owner-occupied unit when it's done.
I know, I'm familiar with the, the family, and that they're in the construction business, the family, so they know what they're doing.
It's been on the market for...
Oh, it ranges.
Yeah, this has been on the market for a long, long time, and the damage was due to...
A bu, pipe for the heating system broke up on the second floor, just, just water damage, everything.
When we say gutted, we mean gutted, it's a shell, it's a shell.
Yeah, they did, they did hang some drywall on some of the outside walls, but they didn't finish it.
Right. Okay, call for a vote on the resolution number 2014-14-CD, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract...